Called me in order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the St. Nebraska governing body. The city of St. advised by the Nebraska Open Means Act of Connection Business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign sheet is available for use for any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state your name and address for the clerk's record. There are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be made or directed through the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of St. reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilson.
President.
Back here, Camperton.
Here.
Pullman.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Hendrick.
President.
First item this evening is the draft minutes of January twenty first, two thousand and twenty.
Move.
Second.
The motion is second, is in for discussion. Sign, not to address your votes. Please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Captain Pullman, Miller, Singleton, Smith, Hendrick.
The next two items are the consent agenda items for this evening.
Move through.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is in for discussion. Sign, not to address your votes. Please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Captain Pullman, Miller, Singleton, Smith, Hendrick.
Next we have appointments. Can we do all of these at once? Kelly, do you need to issue? You know, there are different boards. We have nine different ones.
If you want to do it that way, you sure can.
Okay, so we'll just do them all.
But yeah, if anyone wants to object and pull one out and do it separately, we can.
By the way, I'll just read through all of these. Item number one is to reappoint Randy Chaff to the Park and Recreation Board for a three-year term. Reappoint Mike Hecker to the Community Redevelopment Authority for Tax Implement Financing, CRA, for a five-year term. Reappoint Kurt Sherman and Stan Obermuller to the Citizen Advisory Review Committee Economic Development Plan for a three-year term. Reappoint Claudia Horton and Patty Payne to the Cemetery Board for a three-year term. Reappoint Juanita Gullings to the Civic Center Commission for a three-year term. Reappoint Ann Underwood and Trish Johnson to the LV eight forty Sales Tax Application Review Board for Economic Development for a three-year term. Reappoint Georgia Hathworth to the Housing Authority for a five-year term. Appoint Trish Johnson to replace Gary Palmrenke and reappoint John Owens and Ann Underwood to the CBVG Application Review Board for Economic Development Program Loan Reuse for a three-year term. Reappoint Boyd Gable to the Housing Appeals Board for a three-year term. Unless there's any objections to do them as a group, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is in for discussion. Sign, not to address your votes. Please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Captain Pullman, Miller, Singleton, Smith, Hendrick.
Under administrative items, our first item this evening is presentation acceptance of two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen annual audit. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Marcy Luth. I'm with the firm AMGL out of Grand Island. And most of you have probably heard my partner, Terry Galloway, who's now retired. So I've been the lead auditor on your engagement all these years. And so I'm going to present tonight and kind of run through a similar exercise to what Terry usually did in that we've passed out the benchmarking spreadsheet to you guys. And then I, you also have in front of you the bound audit report. I'm going to start out and just make a couple of comments on the audit itself. We do have an unmodified opinion, which is always what you want when you go through an audit. And so that says the financial statements present fairly without exception, the results of operations and the net position for the year. I think what I'm going to do is start out on this benchmarking spreadsheet that you guys have in front of you because a lot of the information that we'll talk about in there, rather than going through the in-depth financial statements, really presents the key information and shows the page number on the financial statement where this data is gleaned from. And so as a reminder, what this benchmarking study does, it compares you guys to peers. So other Nebraska cities your size. And so there are twelve cities included in this benchmarking, and the populations range between four thousand and nine thousand. So you guys are right in that range. Starting out in this benchmarking spreadsheet, one thing to note under the valuation, you guys' per capita valuation is about seventy thousand seven hundred. And that's higher than your peers, which average about fifty-five thousand. So you've got a very strong valuation in your community. Item number one there, which you can see we're pulling from page fourteen of the audit report, looks at unrestricted net position compared to your total net position. Now unrestricted net position is going to be that that's not restricted or tied up in capital assets. So it's more the flexible net position that you have in order to be able to do projects and really make your own decisions with that. As a rule, we'd like to see that between twenty-five and thirty percent of total net position. And that's what's in the recommended column. You can see that for you guys, your government wide is at about thirty-five percent. Your governmental activities is around twenty-seven percent. And your business type is at forty. So you're above that recommended level in all ranges, but right in the, right in the range. You'll also note on that second line, if you look back historically on your governmental activities, you can see what an improvement you've had over the last five years. That was at ten percent five years ago. And so you're now at about twenty-seven percent. So there's been steady improvement in that category. Item number two is your top five sources of revenue. And so for you guys, your sales tax runs about two hundred and sixty dollars per capita. You can see that compares to your peer groups about three tenths. So you're a little lighter than your peers on sales tax. But your property tax is higher. And again, that's because of your valuation. Your state allocation runs a bit lower than your peers. Again, this is going to be driven by your, by your property valuation. Because you guys have a higher property valuation, you have a lower tax asking. So you don't receive the municipal equalization that some of your peers do. So that's what drives that state money down a bit. Your grants and contributions, you see you've been consistent over the last three years, but you're running a little bit lighter than your peer group. And then on franchise tax, you guys are running a bit ahead. Under item number three, your state allocation, we've already mentioned. Your municipal equalization, you guys do not receive just due to the tax levy that you have. But your highway allocation runs right in line, very consistent with where you've been in the past and right in line with your peers. When you look at number four, your governmental expenses per capita, you can see that St. is a very efficient operation. When you compare your cost per capita with your peer group, you'll see that you're below the peers in, in most of these categories. You'll also see, if you look back over the last five years, very consistent amount that's been spent in each one of those categories. But you can see administratively, thirty-eight dollars compared to your peer average, about ninety-five. Cemetery, you're right in line. Civic Center, the pool, you can see right in line. Fire and rescue, you're a bit lower than what some of your peers have as far as expenditures. Library, slightly higher. Recreation, a little bit lower. Police, you've been consistent, but slightly lower. Building inspector, golf, senior center, very consistent, very comparable, but overall pretty efficient. Number five is your outstanding geo debt compared to valuation. You can see you have point seven one. Anything less than three, we consider excellent. So you guys are in very good financial position as far as your, your geo debt. On page, under item number six, your unassigned fund balance compared to your total general fund expenditure. So normally, we like to see this about forty percent, which means you basically have forty percent of what it's going to cost to operate in unassigned fund balance. You guys this past year were at eighty percent. Now look back historically, look how far you've come over the last five years. Major, major improvement. So congratulations on that. You've really built up that governmental size, so it's a lot stronger. Item seven is your months expense in street cash. You guys have about four months compared to, we'd recommend around twelve. Now that's going to fluctuate a bit. You know, as you have different projects that happen, you'll see that go up and down. But overall, you know, over time, you'd like that to average around twelve months. Under number eight, you can see that your tax levy is lower than your peers because you guys have such a high valuation. You've got a higher amount of property tax that you're generating on a much lower levy than what your peers have. Item number nine is your net depreciable capital assets compared to original cost. Now this is telling us how old or how far depreciating your capital assets are. What we would like is to see that drop no lower than thirty-five percent or it indicates there's going to be some major capital expenditures that need to be coming up. You guys can see that for your governmental activities, you're at about fifty-seven percent, indicating there's been a lot of replacements, a lot of capital investment in the recent history. And then for business type, you're at about forty-five percent. So very strong there as well. Under item number ten, on your operating income, we'd like to see this as a target at about fifteen percent. And basically what that means is your operating revenues for your utilities minus operating expenses. You want that to average around fifteen percent in order to generate enough dollars for those eventual capital replacements. You guys are a little bit ahead in water. You're right in line in sewer. And electric was about one point seven compared to that fifteen percent recommendation. So one to watch. I know as you guys do your rate studies, that's one just to note that this past year, we came in, you know, a lot lower than what you'd like to see over time. But just keep that in mind. Item number eleven, your debt coverage. You can see that you're above the one point five recommended in all three categories of utilities. And then finally, for cash reserves, what we do here is look at what's six months' worth of operating expenditures for your governmental and compare that to what you have for cash reserves. So we'd recommend two million based on your, your general fund operating expenditures. You guys have about three point six. So very strong as far as cash reserves in that capacity. And then also on your business type, not only the operating expenditures, but eventual capital replacement, we'd recommend about nine point nine. You guys have about twelve. So good cash reserves on both the governmental as well as the utility side of things. Before I jump into the audit report, any questions on anything that we've gone over there? I think the thing to always look at is look at where you've trended. And I pointed out where we saw some of the major, major improvement over the last five years. So that's great. Couple of things that I do want to point out in the audit report, and a lot of times for those of you that don't like to read seventy pages worth of audit, the management discussion and analysis upfront is a very good tool because it compares, like starting on page number eight, it compares this year versus last year for your assets, liabilities, equity, for both the governmental as well as the business type funds. So that's always a nice comparison to see in a real short snapshot how things compare to last year. The same is true on page nine for your governmental revenues and expenses. So you can see how those compare. And you guys have been very consistent this year compared to last year as far as revenues and expenses. And continuing on to page ten for your utility funds. So that I think is a good spot to see overall the financial statements for the year. The other important stuff that shows up in the management discussion and analysis on page eleven, continuing on to page twelve, the major capital asset project. And there were some large projects during this last year that you guys have invested capital dollars into. And those are listed out, so you can see where those dollars were spent, what projects those went into. And finally, on page twelve, we compared the debt this year versus last year. And what, or excuse me, that continues on to page thirteen. On page thirteen, we compared the debt. And that shows your debt decreased about one point four million. And that's both for governmental as well as utility compared to the prior year. It's about a nine point three percent decrease in overall debt. And that's just due to the scheduled principal payments that were made. Okay? On page sixty-one, we listed commitments that are outstanding. And there are a couple of larger projects. The rail campus project had about eight hundred thousand committed at the end of the year. And the substation improvement project had about five hundred eighty-five thousand. So those were two very large items that were out there pending. The other part of the financials that I always feel is very important to note is on page sixteen. And as you guys look at your financial statements, sometimes as a governmental entity, it's easy to look at the cash number and think, yeah, we've got a lot of cash. But I think it's always important to look at each fund and look at down in the fund balance section, what are the restrictions? What are the commitments? Are any of these dollars assigned? And then what's left? What's unassigned? And for you guys in your general fund, you've got three point six million that's unassigned. And again, that's what you have some capacity to make decisions and have some flexibility with. And again, you guys have built that up over the last several years. So you've done very well in that capacity. In the back of the report, we have our internal control and compliance report because you're a governmental entity. And we always list in there, lack of segregation of duties. You guys are a small enough organization, despite the size of the city that you are. There's a limited number of people that handle your finances. And so it's always important as you guys review the claims, if you guys are seeing any kind of financial reports, just make sure you're comfortable. Ask whatever questions come up because that does help with the segregation of duties. It helps to have your sets of eyes looking at things, asking questions if something doesn't seem quite right. Okay? The other thing that we've issued as part of the audit, there's a letter, and it's about a four-page letter. And it's just required communication from us as auditors to you guys as counsel. And it's on our letterhead, but under the first paragraph, it says significant audit findings. And I don't know if you guys have those, Bunny, did they receive copies of those? Yeah, they've got those in the front room. Okay, I'm just going to briefly run through. The first page talks about accounting policies. Those really haven't changed compared to last year. The second page, we list out the audit adjustments that we proposed. And we proposed twenty-two audit adjustments on the governmental side. They increased the fund balance sixteen thousand dollars, so they netted out to not much. There were thirteen adjustments which increased the net position of the business type or utilities by two point five million. Now, that sounds like a big number, but remember, you guys run on a cash basis throughout the course of the year. We come in capitalized fixed assets. We record depreciation. We move debt payments against the liability balances. So there's a lot of accrual to cash type adjustments. That's where those dollars come into play. Because this last year, you guys capitalized three point three million of assets in the utility funds. You paid down debt of nine hundred thirty-eight thousand in utilities. And depreciation amounts to almost one point six million. So those are some big entries that swing back and forth. That's where the majority of those dollars come into play. On the third page at the bottom, there are four recommendations that we made. One of those, there was one check that we were trying to chase down during the audit. It was on the outstanding checklist. And it turns out, it didn't clear until about the middle of November. It was an item that they thought they were ready to pay for, and then it got held up because the equipment wasn't quite ready. And just as auditors, we always remind people, hey, try not to issue those or print the checks until you're ready to issue them. Because we don't like to see those heads for any significant amount of time. The other, item two and three, we've had in here before, but just our continued encouragement to update your chart of accounts. And really, as you do that, build your chart of accounts into more of a fund basis. Right now, your governmental funds are all kind of mixed together. And the account numbers do not really flow as far as assets, liabilities. You can't really discern what you're looking at just based on the account, on the account number. And I think Nick and I have talked, and as, as he makes those changes, I think you'll have a good system where it will be a lot easier to, to understand what you're dealing with just by looking at an account number. You can tell what fund and whether it's an asset liability or what that is. And then finally, our last recommendation that we had was a relatively small item, but you guys have a split bond issue. And it's split between debt service, water, and sewer. And during this last year, one of the interest payments did not get split. And so there was about eleven hundred that was due from, the debt service was owed. And the water fund owed about nine hundred of it. And the sewer fund owed about two hundred of it. So just wanted to get those caught up, so that split issue handled appropriately. But really, for all the transactions you guys have, that's relatively short list of recommendations. So I think they're doing a good job internally. And I'll open it up to you guys if you have any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Nick, you got anything you want to add? Obviously, this was Nick's first full year of the helm. Hopefully going to be able to implement some of these recommendations from the accounts standpoint. I think for that nature, things we've been trying to tackle for some time, just the dedicated body to get done, now that we have one hopefully.
I think that kind of, I think this last year, I really was just really trying to get on my feet. And I think I have a lot better understanding of, of everything that's going on in the city now. And so I think as we work through this current fiscal year, that's something that we should be able to move forward with and, and get the new chart of accounts set up. And then also to work into the funding accounting system with our software providers. In fact, we've been in touch with them to kind of strike down the process. And so it's kind of at the beginning stages there. I guess from, from audit standpoint, you know, I learned, I learned quite a bit through this first year at the city and, and working up to preparing for this audit. And I guess, you know, looking at the audit, you can see that the city has spent some money this last year. But I think it's all, you can see where we've made major capital improvements and then also paid down debt. And so I think, I think from a financial standpoint, we're going to kind of.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'd like to thank Marcy and her crew. They do a wonderful job when they come out and they don't leave us in total shambles. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Was there any other question or comments?
The last one, I'll note is as we continue on again to work into the budget cycle, come the spring and then, you know, kind of get hot and heavy into the summer, we'll look again one more time at least to have Marcy and their staff also assist us with the budget and trying to take what we learn from the audit and apply it into giving you guys good guidance into looking at utility rates and everything else that we normally go through in the budget cycle. So this gives us the firm standing to set us off for where we ended last fiscal year, looking at what we plan for this fiscal year. And I mean, we have substantial capital outlays again with all the huge projects we're going to undertake this year. And so build that up and then have them assist us in giving you additional guidance and, and taking a look at things. So we thank them for that as well.
Yes, thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen annual audit?
Second.
Motion is second. To address your votes. Please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Captain Pullman, Miller, Singleton, Smith, Hendrick, Smith and Craig.
Thank you. I have a reservation award for the Carol K Boulevard, Cedar Hill Press, Federal Eight-C, College X, URB, seven, three, three, sub one, to N.D. Collins, Contracting Company Incorporated, the amount being heard, four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents and approving plan specifications used in the Nebraska Department of Transportation bidding process. Before we get into this, I want to grab to update the council on where we're at. And the council can decide how it wants to proceed this evening.
Pursuant to our last city council meeting, when we first considered this resolution to award the bid on the Carol K project, it was noted that we received the night before notification from Greg Damon, who is the attorney for the Homeowners Association, they're involved in this project, that they had filed a request for a single audit in the office of the Inspector General within the U.S. Department of Transportation. Then the night of the council meeting, about five, we also received from Mr. Damon a copy of the actual request that was sent in to the OIG office. So we have the physical document and attachments. That document noted that that request was filed on January fourth, two thousand and twenty. And so it's been with the OIG's office since that date. And so upon the recommendation of this body, we tabled this item until this meeting to give administration time to try to follow up with the OIG office, Nebraska Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Authority, and whoever else we could dig up out of any corner that might have some information to provide to you tonight. And so that was the task that me and Kelly undertook. I know that Kelly, the very next day, contacted and, and made messages with Scott Harding, which is the actual person this request was sent to. And I'll let Kelly, Kelly, you want to speak specifically to that initial conversation?
Yeah, it was just a request as to the process and a request for confirmation that it had been, it had been filed and, and received. And Scott did make that confirmation that it was received.
So that's what we did at that time. And then we tried to work to find out what the process was. To say that their office was kind of vague would be maybe an understatement. Unfortunately, we're just dealing with the federal, you know, office up there and then DOT, or the DOT, not NDOT. So from that, I worked to coordinate with JEO, NDOT, and Federal Highway. And so I spoke with basically all project contacts at NDOT, whether it was on the financial side, the project side, administration side. So I made a number of contacts, also the Attorney General's office, to just inform them of what was going on, what the status of the bid was, and see if anybody was familiar with the situation. Has this happened on a project before? What's going on? Does anyone know how this works? And based on our emails and our conversations, not one person had a clue. And so they weren't incredibly helpful in regards to trying to give us some sort of insight to provide to you guys to make a decision about, you know, authority, what would happen, how fast the turnaround might be, things of that sort. And so we provided as much information we could. We provided copies of the information that was provided to us by Mr. Damon. And then we moved on to Federal Highway. And so I spoke with the people at Federal Highway in the local Lincoln office, who are the ones that actually did all of the review of this project. There are three staff members that worked on this project throughout its iterations. They're the ones that reviewed the NEPA process. And they were reviewed a number of other elements on it, signed off on it. They were not entirely familiar with the OIG process and what that might entail. But they were willing to be helpful in any way they could. But ultimately, they had no say one way or the other on how it would impact for whatever reasons that were disclosed by Mr. Damon and the homeowners about what the process might be, how long it might take. And so they were very helpful. And so at that point, Kelly and I regrouped together with the administration and we circled back around with the OIG's office again. And we asked questions in regards to, are these a public nature? If you did respond to them, is that a public nature? How do we find out what's going on here? And essentially, they asked us to file a FOIA, which is a Freedom of Information Act request. And so Kelly did that. And that was sent in yesterday. We received a response just this afternoon on this item. And oddly enough, is, Mr. Hofstadter made the request on Monday, and we received a response this afternoon. And we'd requested all documents, records, and determinations relating to the January fourth, two thousand and twenty request for single audit of the Nebraska Department of Transportation local project, listing the project number made by the East Ridge Homeowners Association through their attorney of record, Greg Damon. Seems pretty specific, date, time, project. And they responded, please be advised, the DOT, OIG office of audit, now valuation, does not have any ongoing or closed audits fitting the date, description, or number that you have provided in your request. Upon further analysis of your request, it appears the records you seek may be found within the Nebraska Department of Transportation. You may contact Nebraska DOT using the information found on their website. So.
So that's where we are.
That's where we are as of today.
So they're not even admitting to having received information about an audit request? But we know that they did receive it.
We do know, and Kelly confirmed it with the, I mean, their request went directly to Scott. That's who is addressed here, Scott Harding. And me and Kelly have both spoken to Scott via phone and email. And so I forwarded this Freedom of Information Act request to Scott and said, you told us to file this so that we could get whatever's going on with this. I give due note to Mr. Damon and the homeowners to, that I, we know. We've been in contact with, with Greg a number of times and just said, if you hear anything, will you let us know? And at least Greg has said yes. If we, at this time, we have nothing back. And so we trust that that's accurate. And so we're just concerned because, you know, it was filed weeks and weeks before anybody ever told us. So we want to be on top of it. But Greg has reported that they haven't received anything back either. I don't want to bash on federal employees or anything else, but we're dealing with a really large bureaucracy. And the fact that we requested a document that we know they have and should have been a piece of that response, and they said they didn't have anything. I mean, this is what we're dealing with, which is frustrating. For all accounts, for everyone involved, that it can't work correctly. But we forwarded all that on to Scott and basically said, you know, we'll get ahold of you tomorrow. We did exactly what you asked us to do. We need to understand better the process, the determination of what you're going to do on this so that we can advise this council and you can make a decision fully informed. And so we're just not there.
We requested that they expedite it as soon as possible because of the time sensitivity. And we have this matter at hand here where we're ready to award a bid.
The bid was opened on January sixteenth. I believe it's valid for thirty days. And so we'll work with NDOT on other elements of that tomorrow. We were trying to get ahold of them this afternoon after we got the FOIA goofiness going on. And they're telling us to go back to NDOT. And so at this point, we are not terribly much further along than where you were at the last meeting.
As you can see though, I mean, a lot of energy and resources have been expended at this point to try and determine and, and assess the, the, this, this request for an audit and what does it really mean because it's not something that. the, this request for an audit and what does it really mean, because it's not something that apparently happens very often. And so we don't have a lot of guidance because no one's really seen this, at least not around here in the past, so. So from the standpoint of making a recommendation on how to proceed, it's just a matter of how you want to assess the risk moving forward because we don't have enough information at this point. So the risk, if you wanted to move forward with this tonight and award the bid, the risk would be is that for some reason the federal government decided to pull the funding, then we have a shortfall that we have to figure out how to make up if we're gonna do a contract. If you decided you did not want to proceed and then, in which case I would say, just table it, don't, there's no reason to have a full discussion as we'd have to have it again in the future anyway. I do know people had asked about having an opportunity to speak on this item and I said they would. But if we don't actually speak on it tonight, there'd be an opportunity obviously in the future to do that when it would come up again. The risk that you run though is that, as was mentioned, the bid is only bid for a certain period of time. So if the bid expires, which it would expire before the next council meeting, which is the reason why this is on, you might be wondering why this is on the agenda if we don't have much more to report, it's because the bid's going to expire prior to the next council meeting. And at that point, I would assume the state would wait until the appropriate time as they felt comfortable going out for a new bid and do the process again. At that point, the risk you run is that the costs are gonna more likely go up. They've already gone up considerably since last year. They've gone up, a lot of it's because of a lot of the flood damage that occurred in the state previously, all those projects now are going on. And because of that, you're seeing the cost of materials have gone up quite a bit, as well as the availability of contractors. I was actually contracted by one of the contractors who's involved in this bid process and there's concerns that if this gets delayed and we miss the next, or we miss this current construction window, that he may not be able to do the project. And this is a local contractor that would miss out on this project. And so, there are a lot of people watching this because this is important to a lot of people. And so, I just want to make the council aware of sort of the risks on both sides of moving forward, either moving forward or not moving forward and tabling it because all these delays cost money. You know, the processes that we're going through since last year, when the homeowners association wasn't able to negotiate with Department of Transportation, we missed that window. So now, here we are, this year, a year later, we keep missing these windows, these costs are gonna keep going up and, you know, I don't know what to tell you at this point because it's frustrating from our standpoint because as you could probably glean from his report, we spent a lot of time, you know, here recently, trying to track down federal agencies, state agencies and the like and trying to get answers and we haven't been able to. So I'm a little frustrated as far as this, as where we are right now because this feels just like another delay that's unnecessary and quite frankly, is going to cost more money as we move down this path, so. So, to circle back, if you wanted to discuss this and make a decision on this resolution, you sure can, it's on the agenda. If you want to table it instead, you know, I don't, the only thing I could think of would be is if we got a definitive answer in the next couple of days that said, here's, you know, here's what's going on. We could have a special meeting prior to the, probably next week, prior to the expiration of the bid. I just think by missing that bid, we take a tremendous risk on what the next bid might come in at. So, so with that, I just leave it up to the council on how you, once you proceed, Ellen, do you want to add something?
A question of clarification, are we under any timeframe timetable regarding expiration of the federal dollars themselves?
Potentially. These dollars were obligated, I believe, in like oh nine. And so, they keep authorizing, my understanding in talking just through this last round, when we didn't hit the bid window in the fall because of trying to delay out that date for the condemnation proceedings and push that off into December, January, that we talked to the N D O T, Jody Gibson's the main contact on that. And it's partially up to it being re-obligated up and moved on. And so, there is the potential, but at this point, I can't give you a definitive answer, it's like, here's the hard and fast date when those federal funds will be pulled.
How much is that amount that we're getting for federally?
I think it's approximately seven hundred and seventy thousand.
And then?
And again, seven forty. Again, it's been reported many times and I, you know, you try to do your best to communicate this to the press and anybody else, is the original balance of numbers on this was eighty-twenty. But at the point that the feds have fully obligated the project at the seven forty, any increased cost after the seven forty is on the city. So any increased cost above that now, in the total project cost is on the city.
So, time delay and all our investment up to this point, what do you think we've spent for engineering fees because we've been setback on this how many times?
I think there's more than just engineering fees, I know I sent an email to you at the request of councilman Camper and kind of broke that out. You're probably, when all is said and done, right now, closing in on three hundred thousand.
So, in the end?
Because we still have legal bills to pay to Kelly for the actions that were paid, for the condemnation. There may be other engineering elements that are finalizing, but at this point, it's gone out for bid, it's pretty much stagnant. It won't go up anymore as long as you don't approve moving forward with the bid and we don't continue to have legal bills. And we've kind of drawn the line, it won't go over three hundred.
In the end, if we was to decide not to do this project and pull it, it would cost the city a sword and the citizens a sword, a million dollars.
If you don't?
If we decide not to do this project. We would lose out, I'm not, we're gonna lose out.
You're gonna lose out on seven hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Three hundred thousand that we've incurred.
And you've spent, you'll spend three hundred, approximately three hundred thousand dollars in legal fees, extra engineering that wasn't within the scope of the project and then the engineering that was within, the preliminary engineering that went into the scope before construction. And that was outlined in that email I sent out to everyone.
My experience with O I G and granted it's with H H S and not Department of Transportation, these things take several months. I mean, you go, those processes, they go through an entire investigative process. So, I mean, in a big ask, it would be several months, I don't know, I would assume that we could get it sometime around then, but it could be a while.
Well, at some point, you're gonna have to assess the risk as far as whether to move forward or not. I will say this, that I am a little, if you look at this from a thirty thousand feet in the air view, I'm a little concerned at the, what appears to be attempts at delaying this process as if it's an effort to run out the clock when reality is you're just driving up the costs. Because, you know, assuming the project does go forward at some point, that money's already been spent and even if it doesn't go forward, we've already spent our obligation. It's not like a pot of money sitting there that we can say we're gonna move to a different Rose project. I know there was some discussion about that, but that's, that's not, that's not the reality of the situation. And so, I think that's a pretty dangerous precedent to set if we're going to allow like the clock to run out on these projects because what's to stop the next project that we have? They have people that don't want it to be able to use the same tactic and suddenly, we're in the same boat that we're in now. This has been a long project, it's been ten years since the initial application, it's been at least twenty years. This has been in the plans for the city, so at this point, you know, just, I would just be careful about how you want to proceed and what precedent you want to set as far as moving forward because if you're, if you play cards, we're pretty much pot committed at this point, moving forward.
What, what was the purpose of having the audit request? Like what kind of information are they seeking to get?
Did you get, did you read this?
No.
The only information we have is the actual request.
So, and it's in, it's kind of point by point in the request?
Yes. Couple of points I want to make, John, to what you were saying about the engineering costs, correct me if I'm wrong Greg, weren't driven up by any delays by the homeowners association or us necessarily. The original project, you know, was slated to be in a wetland, basically, and so it had to be re-engineered, from my understanding, a couple of times to mitigate that and move it. And hence, the increase of the engineering costs.
Essentially, you're correct, the wetlands is not so much as you had identified parkland. Somehow in your comprehensive plan or whatnot, years and years ago, you had identified the area that you had acquired in the floodplain buyout as parkland. Thus also the reason you're getting a butterfly garden to offset the taking of some of that parkland. That is the, and that was a recommendation by Federal Highway.
So the clarification I want to make to John's point is that it's not, it wasn't necessarily the HOA that's delayed this, that's added all this cost to the engineering. It's just kind of the nature of the whole project, why that has happened. You know, you and I were the only ones on the council back when this very first, back in two thousand and eleven, when it all came about. And to Josh, what you were saying about setting a precedent, you know, we have a precedent here of, you know, none of us may like this, but it is, it is a legal, you know, the, one of the rights we have as US citizens is to petition the government, right? This is one way you petition the government, when there's something happening that you don't like. We may not like it, it may cost money, it may cost us money. At the end of the day, who knows what may happen? And so, you know, given the fact that we have been talking about this project for nine years now and this audit could take several months. I mean, in my opinion, we have so many unknowns, I was hoping to get a little more clarification from you, based upon your homework.
You were probably hoping to give it as well.
But, yeah, but we don't have it, you know, and as a council member, not just with this project, but with all the decisions we make, the most frustrating thing for me is when we're being asked to make a decision and we don't have the information that we need to make a decision. We can suppose that a new bid would cost more money, that's a fair assumption, we don't know how much. We could suppose that this may end up pulling the funding and leaving us on the hook for a bunch, we don't know. You know, we can suppose all kinds of things, but right now, I'm gonna be making a motion to table it just because we do not have, in my opinion, sufficient information to make a real solid decision yet. And given the fact that this project already has grown so big from what it originally was intended, for lack of a better term, a little bit more isn't gonna make a difference, in my opinion.
I'm making a motion.
I'm making a motion that we table it.
Okay, is your motion, is your second?
I'll second.
Your motion is second, is there any further discussion? Chris?
Sid, can we amend your tabling to if we get information prior to the expiration of this bid, that we have a special meeting to address?
Yeah, I would amend that, yeah.
I don't know what you'll get out of Scott when you talk with him tomorrow.
A friendly amendment.
Yeah, if we get information prior to the sixteenth of February, correct, which is the bid expiration?
approximately, it's probably the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Basically, there's time prior to the expiration.
How many would have a special meeting to address?
You need twenty-four hours notice before you meet. We'll follow up with N D O T on another one. That's what I was gonna ask, is just table it to something certain or give us some sort of insight.
So you're okay with that? And then the second, are you okay with that? You need to make a statement?
Yes, I'm thinking in my calendar, like.
Okay, no, that's fine, so we have a motion, is that gonna be for a discussion then?
Can I just add something to the question about the audit? The only other thing I can say from our research that me and Kelly have done in our discussions with the O I G is the only person that's explicitly stated that funds would be pulled or could be pulled is actually Mr. Damon's letter. That's the only one we're working off that saying and me and Kelly have tried to work to find out what the realistic responses and expectations are to these sorts of audits and how the O I G reacts to them. And if they were to find something wrong with, something specifically cited by the homeowners, what would be the response? Would it be, no, just undertake a process again and you're good? No, it's just a finding like we see in our audits and they do nothing with the money and say, hey, state, N D O T. So I don't want it to be some guaranteed boogeyman or something that we said that the funds will be pulled. We're relying off the statement of the homeowner's attorney. So, that's a point of clarification that we're gonna continue because I've looked through their audits. I'll let you know that the exact fund that this comes out of that's cited in the N D O T programming documents, which is this gigantic box sitting next to me on the floor down here that I have, is that they just audited this specific fund that this is funded out of. The federal funds with the state of Nebraska, just in September alone. And so, an audit's been performed, because there's an audit requested, doesn't even mean it will be undertaken. And so the first question we need to ask is, will they even be realistically undertaking an audit? And we want that first, because you can go off the cliff about where everywhere else they'll go if they undertake the audit. And so, we're gonna work to try and understand it from all facets, but I want it to be known that we have this discussion of what if the money gets pulled, what if the money gets pulled? We can't even tell you the likelihood of that, the only person that's actually specifically stated that that's a possibility is Mr. Damon. Not the O I G or N D O T or Federal Highway, so. But just noting the lay of the land and what we'll undertake in the next few days to try and get you more information, but we've spent a considerable amount of time on this between me and Kelly, trying to work on this and to the delay of a lot of the other things you also want us to be doing of note.
Ellen, did you want to add something?
I guess, my experience in reading O I G opinions is they make recommendations, they do not act as a judge and jury. In this case, because it's a request for an audit, do we know for sure that whatever the O I G says actually translates into action or it doesn't become a recommendation to another body?
That's what we're trying to learn and that's the process.
Part of the problem is that this is such an unusual process here, at least the people that we work with have not seen this before. And so they really can't tell us for sure what any of this means.
I'm assuming it's a recommendation to the Federal Department of Transportation on what to do with the funds. I'm working into that assumption.
Okay, thank you.
But again, we're still hoping to get some clarity.
Gotcha.
So we had a motion and a second, any further discussion? Saying none, this is a table, did you actually vote?
I just can tell we have everyone here tonight to give some guidance because we did say that we would have this on the agenda night for discussion. So the intent in tabling it, if I'm correct, is that if it comes up again and we consider the bid, that's gonna be their opportunity to come speak on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say something.
Okay, I don't want them to walk away that they s-
No, I, well, I have a chance to just ask a question that hasn't, it has to do with the project, but not what you guys are discussing.
Can we do this vote, can we do this vote first and then? Yeah, so, so go ahead and register, what's that? Yeah, go ahead, just play the votes.
Lenny and Tiger, walking back, Campus Calderman, Singleton Schmidt, opposed, Miller Hendrix.
What was your question? What's that?
I don't know that it's appropriate to take random questions.
Why do they know what it is? Go ahead, just real quick, if we can answer it, we will, if we're not allowed.
Yeah, you can choose not to answer, my question just was if in fact something was to happen with said grant money, where would the, where would the seven hundred and forty thousand dollar grant money shortfall be made up? Where would that money come from?
So we don't know that because, well, no, because we don't know for sure if they would, if they, we don't, we're s- Greg Damon is the only one that has indicated that they could pull the funding, we don't even know that's an option. If that is what, if for some reason that's what happens, then the council would have to decide on if they wanted to move forward and if they did, where that would come from.
Where it would come up with that money or what happens?
Yeah, because there's bonding, I mean, there's different options that are out there. But at this point, we've not explored that because we're working on the assumption that the funding will be there.
It's there.
It's there until it's not.
Right, that was my only question.
Yep, that's a fair question. So that concludes item number two under administrative items. Item number three, the ordinance to vacate utility easements on lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, block two, in the platinum title Fairway Woods Edition, City of Seward, Greg?
Yes, we got a request from the developers of Fairway Woods to realign on the given lots and blocks, their easements to give them a little bit more buildable space. Once they had builders come in and actually look at the layout of the easements, they felt like they were just not functional to put on the size of housing that they're anticipating there. So what this does is they went through and cleared trees on the back- And so what this does is they went through and cleared trees on the back line of the tree line. It's still there, obviously, you can see it, but they cleared it out more to extend the utilities a little bit further back, loop them a little further back. And this gives more buildable area. Um, and then they've already done all of the survey work to re-establish new easements. And that document will be filed right after this one is filed to vacate the old one, so.
Did they have to move the boxes, Greg? Cause it looks like the boxes are already-
Yep, they're gonna move, all the utilities are already set and they're gonna move all of them and they'll all be done at their cost.
They're gonna move them all back, okay. Cause I saw when they cleared it out, there was like a space.
So there, we said, we'll get contractors and have our crews go out there and do it. And then obviously they need to move Windstream and Time Warner and anybody else that's in the ground out there. And they have to coordinate that themselves, but this is what they want to do. It will make those lots uh, so have significantly more buildable area that, that they want, so.
Any questions or comments on item number?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to vacate utility easements on lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight and nine, block two in the platent titled Fairway Woods Edition, as herein after, set forth to provide for publication of this ordinance in Tampa form, provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The title, the ordinance presented by title is designated as ordinance number twenty twenty dash five and the title is hereby approved and a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion, seeing none, please register your votes, please spread the votes.
Tony and Damon, walking back campus, Calderman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendrix, we're checking.
Again, this, this is ordinance number twenty twenty dash five. Anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed when the doctor's ready?
So move.
The motion and a second, any further discussion, seeing none, again, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty dash five be finally passed and adopted. Please register your vote, please spread the votes.
Tony and Pedro, walking back campus, Calderman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendrix, we're checking.
This is the only ordinance this evening, so I need one final motion to make this ordinance a part of the final, of the permanent record.
The second?
The motion and a second, Chris?
Was that, who made the motion?
John, of John.
In the second room.
Chris? We have a motion and a second, please register your votes, please spread the votes. Item four, Master Agreement with Short, Elliott, Hedrickson Incorporated for Contracted Engineering Services, Greg?
Yes, um, as they're called, S E H, uh, this is actually the firm that Jake went to. Uh, and the reason that we requested this, just like every other engineering firm we have, is that in the meantime, we have applicants in, we've begun the interview process for a new city engineer. But we're right in the middle of carrying projects forward. And so some of them, we've been able to transfer off into other groups, but some of them are just at an odd point where it doesn't make any sense to move it to a consulting engineering firm. And can, talking, speaking with Jake and his firm, uh, they would be willing to allow Jake to help carry some of those off at the prices and amounts agreed in the-